I'll get that.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have Dora. Would you like to introduce yourself to us, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Dora Anam. I am the president and CEO of the Bethany Legacy Foundation here for the fourth week. So I moved here four weeks ago and I'm loving Madison. I came to Madison from Cincinnati, was at the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, so I have a lot of experience with foundations and philanthropy. And before that, I worked at the Health Collaborative, which works with the hospitals in Cincinnati. So I feel like I have a really good grounding in health and philanthropy. And with this Legacy Foundation, what we're hoping to do is carry on the history of the circle to really invest in the community, specifically Jefferson County, to understand what the social issues that are keeping people from being at their best from a health and wellness perspective. So we have the hospitals, they do their clinical piece. We're not touching that, but this is complementing the social aspects that keep residents from being at their best. So you can imagine, it's a really wide range of things that could range from housing to mental health, addiction services, you name it. I have a very long list of items, but my way of prioritizing is going to be to listen to a lot of the community. I really like when solutions come from residents, places where they live. So I understand the data, but also going to do a lot of people listening and going, touring the county. So we'll do a lot of listening sessions here in Madison, but I'll also take the roadshow through the county to listen to the other parts. And then we'll probably spend the fall and winter prioritizing our funding areas and then we'll turn 2023 into action. So we'll be awarding a lot of grants, but I don't believe that solutions are just from funding. So I think we'll play a leadership role to convene and try to bring facilitators to problem solving and co-creating solutions. So I really welcome a lot of input and conversation and even just meeting folks. So I've set up an email, info@bethanylegacy.org. It's just a general email where I hope folks can reach out if you have ideas, thoughts, concerns, anything you need to know, given that I'm new to the community. We'd love to hear from everyone. So, any questions about the foundation?
When you say grants, do you just...
Yeah, so we have, we'll have funding. We'll have a budget every year of dollars that we're going to award to 501(c)(3)'s. As a charitable private foundation, we can award grants to nonprofits. And we will make decisions on, you know, do we want to fund the clearinghouse for some of the work they're doing, or the United Way because we want them to start a new program? You name it. I'm not quite sure what that will look like. That's why I want to spend some time listening. But the primary focus will be grant making and giving funding to the nonprofits. And then we'll also do some research, do some policy work, maybe there's some things we can do at the state level. Not quite sure. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me. If it's okay, I'll stay for a while?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madison rodeo funding request?
Yes, hi, I'm Melli Troutman. This is Taylor Reinhardt. We're bringing the first PRCA rodeo to Madison up at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds. What we'd like to talk about, we have, we can show you the poster, has some of our sponsors that are on there. I think you're very familiar with seeing us, with some opportunities for matching funds as well. But what we want to talk about today was if there is money available in the ARP. So we would like to propose, anybody that's been out to the fairgrounds know that there's really no great internet or phone service. So today, yesterday, last week, we've been meeting with Spectrum. I did a COAX site survey. It won't host what we need for the rodeo. It has to be a fiber, it has to be a cable. That cable is actually down the street, visible on the pole from the fairgrounds entrance. So it's a matter of running that cable to the fairgrounds and then broadcasting that down through, which it include all the way, we would hope for the sake of the county, for the sake of the fairgrounds, the livestock, the rodeo, and other events that would be there, that we would be able to get that internet established and that service. So not only just the rodeo, it takes a big, so we're expecting RFD TV to come to the rodeo, which is a really big deal, if you're familiar with NASCAR and their crowd. Rodeo has that same base as far as amount of people. So having this, being able to be streamed live is extremely important for all of us. I mean, the rodeo and the county for tourism. We have a partner in tourism, so they have been very generous with us. So it all leads back to this internet and the 600 up and 200 down. And we're not even close at the fairgrounds with a WAP and 35. So we're like 10 times off. So what we're looking to do is talk to the county, talk to you guys, about helping us with that financial part of getting it there. Spectrum has agreed to $25,000 in construction costs. So if it costs 25 to get it to the gate and then an additional, we don't know what that's going to be yet. We did have the site planned. What we do know is they're able to range the price of the service about 300 a month to, on the big scale for the rodeo and for the 4H fair would be 1,300 a month. So of course, everybody kind of winced at that because they're currently paying about $99 a month. So what that money would go to is to ensure that three-year contract. So at that 1,300 a month, and here's where we wanted to tie this in, is that it could be used as a spot in the event we have another pandemic or a reason to shut down schools. I don't believe Jefferson County yet has established a spot where the internet can be utilized by everyone, where you could drive in, be able to use that internet for schooling. So that was something that was mentioned in reading over what the ARP is for, that you would not only have the internet for the rodeo or for special events or the fair, you would have it in place in case of an emergency, a county-wide emergency that would require high-speed internet for, it would be a multiple-use space for that, if that makes sense.
How much?
Yep. Always waiting for that.
Right. Well, what we'd like to ask for, and of course, always at your discretion, but 50,000 is what we're asking. That way, we match, I would hope that we match the 25,000 that the Spectrum is willing to put into construction and then at least a two-year commitment at the 1,300. They, the fair board itself would be allowed to fact that usage down. So say in December, there's nothing going on. Spectrum has given us the option to drop that down to a $300 bill with less and then we could ramp it up for more, if that makes sense. So what I'd like to be able to do with the fair board that we're working very closely with is to secure that at least two years to be able to have that strong internet. We hope to have the rodeo every year and grow it to a week-long festival. And it's big that it's PRCA, it's the last stop before Las Vegas, the NFR. It's some of the best cowboys and cowgirls in the country. 12,000 per event added money. It's a big draw. So it's great for tourism, but it's also great for the county as well. And then secondary, to have this internet situation resolved. And we were really happy to see that there's a box on a pole, like I can see it from the fairgrounds, so it's not something that has to come from 20 miles away.
We also thought that for the 4H fair, it would benefit their auction because you could have online bidding.
And you could livestream. It would be able to...
The internet isn't strong enough at this moment to even get your cell phone sent.
You probably already all know.
You probably know that.
Probably all been there.
Yeah, if you can have online bidders for the kids.
If you look at Boone County and you look at La Porte, they're doing those online auctions from the fair and they are livestream and it's on time. And so those are what some of the counties are doing. And we just hope that, it would benefit all of us. Obviously, we need it for the rodeo and for RFD TV to come in, but I think the county could use it in many different ways, and especially the fair and the kids. So we overlap with the, not the fair itself, but FFA and a lot of the kids, junior rodeo, will be coming to these events. And so we kind of felt like it was a good fit.
I can support your poor service. I was literally watching somebody in front of me during, I'm pretty sure it's the Hulk Show. One of the 4Hers' parents had to leave because their parent, his dad was having a heart surgery condition and they were trying to video, show him Facebook Live or even livestream it. You could hear him talking, you could see him on the video, but it wasn't good enough for him to see what was going on. So I said, "You're probably going to have to video that, upload that to YouTube and send that later."
When the site survey was done with the COAX, it didn't even register the 35 they're paying for. It really came in about 27, 25. So having this fiber cable would just, it's a game changer for everybody involved. So people doing the service out there, anything. So we were surprised when Spectrum couldn't get their signal, so.
We're definitely going to discuss this.
Okay. Is there a point you would like us to check back or you would send us some kind of information back, just so we know? We're really, it's a...
What's your timeline? Your timeline? Well, I know that's when the event is, but you're not waiting until then?
Right. It's, I am talking with Tim, who is the IT for the fair. To the site, I know that the site survey for the fiber has been done, complete. So they can start as soon as we can commit to that. I know they're scared to commit to that 1,300 a month. So we, as soon as better, because it's going to take, it could take 60 days to, you know, things move slowly in the world of running some cable outside. Because there are some permits, those are, that is a state highway. So the 256.
You have to go back to the city.
So, no, it's a state highway. So they have to pull permits just to get down that road a little bit. So more, the more time we have, the more time they have and then we can be assured that this is going to fly for all of us, obviously. Time is of the essence.
Remember the Tourism Board meeting, what happened?
What's that?
They said, "You remember what happened at the Tourism Board meeting, when that was..."
Yeah, yeah, some people came in like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, it'll probably, I mean, it...
Well, we wanted to come in and talk to you about something specific. And specific, instead of like, we really would love to have any money that you'd love to give us, but we wanted something specific that you felt like that would benefit the county and the people in the county, because with that ARP, they're not giving internet to individual houses or individual people. So that does give you that, that place. And so we felt like something specific to talk to you about is that fiber optic cable.
Sure. And we, there's some funding in there that we've identified for broadband. So, but we've also had other, you name them, they've come asking, so.
Sure. Well, that's why it piggybacks with the fairgrounds. It's not like we're asking you to put it at my farm. So it would benefit. So what would you like us to do to follow up? What would be the appropriate measure or to whom should we follow up? Yes.
Yeah, next one, next one. 18th?
Our next meeting's the 18th.
18th would be fantastic. Would there be something you would want in the meantime?
I mean, so in, I mean, if you, so the site plan, it's just going to kind of lay out where it's going. So this is all going to be Wi-Fi once it gets to the points there. I mean, no hard line.
No, I believe it's hard line.
Yes, well, I know to get there, but I mean, at that point, so you said students to come in and use it with a...
That would be Wi-Fi. Yes, that'd be a blanket Wi-Fi, yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just...
I'm that generation right before.
I know, I agree.
The intent is to bring it like to the office and then wipe it out. Wireless access.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, we spoke with, we spoke with Tim, right?
Tim.
Tim believed that there were different places where he had little buildings that could go in. So if it, internet was, our internet needs to be in the grandstand. So there's a place there where he could put it. He was confident, once it gets there, that it...
Once it gets, yeah, it can be, because our idea is not just to stop it at the grandstand. We want to make sure, because it already stopped right down the street. So we just don't want that to, every time, have to come back and go, "Well, we got to go 10 feet further." So, but it is important to the livestock.
Oh, sure. I mean, we've talked about internet being needed out there for a while, so.
All right, then we'll see when the 18th...
18th won't be here.
Okay, where is it?
Be at the 620 Green Road.
Kansas County Public Safety.
EMA, 911 district.
Got that?
Right by that voice.
Okay, oh, I see.
Railroad track.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Just kind of a joke, which is what we call that building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get it right one of these days. And then, Dora? The next, the next treatment train meeting is the 18th up there. Might be something, you want to depend on that?
Yeah, same time?
No, it'll be four o'clock.
Four o'clock?
Yeah. Love to have you at that, so you can kind of catch up where we are with the residential treatment process.
I'm sorry, what was the location?
620 Green Road.
620... Four o'clock?
Yes.
I'll be there.
Bobby? One of the others? I don't see you. I don't see Troy, Dave. I said, "I'm going to go check on the block."
We have been, seemed like crazy busy between trying to get things done and get some momentum going towards chip seal. That we hope to start Monday if the weather will cooperate with us just a little bit and some equipment. They are going to talk with Old Maris today. They're going to start paving tomorrow on Henry Road. Told you I was going to be working on that just a little bit. That'll be about a three-day project, because there are several tons to go on Henry Road. From there, they'll go to 1250 West, which intersects Henry Road. And then they'll be doing 1,400 and 150 South, and they'll update me on the next ones. But that gives me about a week that I can kind of have coordinated with the schools and continue to get notices out. Everything was kind of weather permitting and they didn't want to get too far ahead on the schedule because they were afraid of a change. I said, "Well, I said, I understand that. The better we can kind of have the plan and then change the plan just a little bit as needed will be the best fit, so to speak." We did get liquid road applied on the meadows and they are working on applying, and they've got their crack fill done on Indian Cave. And we're putting down a product there called Action Pave, Action Grade. We're making nice and black and seal them things up. I've got a picture on my phone. It's surprising when you watch asphalt actually deteriorate. When you're just driving down the road, you don't really notice it, especially if you're running 50 and 60 plus. When you're actually walking down roads, well, some of them pass me going that fast. I won't claim I'm one of them, we're trying to keep up, okay? But just walking down Indian Cave, which when you're driving down the road, it looks very good. And that road still rides really good. You can actually see rock that comes dislodged and out of the asphalt. And by basically putting these ceilings down or even chip seal and doing the things, you add a new wearing surface and it's like putting a new roof on your house to protect everything underneath it. We're definitely preservation first and construction second. It's taken a whole mix of fixes to kind of keep all that moving along, so. Go Run is open. I know a lot of, I think there might be more in Switzerland County happy about that than in Jefferson County, but I don't think anybody that travels that road in Jefferson County is disappointed about that one being open. We had K Road closed. I think it's probably close to being open this evening if it wasn't. They were waiting on some concrete to cure over there or the butt mit wall and that was going to be good to go. And there are several other small structures that we continue to work on. Still getting some of the plans and things for the bridges. That's a quick update on the roads outside of the storm damage. Greatly appreciated you guys giving me some of the ARP money for the 500,000. I was able to move very quickly on this and trying to secure some of this equipment that was available that we could put to use this year. Most of this, I was working on budget numbers and availability because you guys know we'll have our budget hearings next week. So I've kind of been preparing for those, so I had a lot of the numbers in front of me. I was able to go ahead and pull the trigger with your all's blessing. I've got a couple quotes on some new equipment, which one of those items was a new Case 521G wheel loader. And you've got two different quotes in front of you. The one is the Sourcewell quote, which is actually the higher one of the two. But since that is a national bid, then we can take anything less than that. That national bid was 172, 847, 57. And on the national bid, it doesn't include a warranty. So if I went through Sourcewell pricing, I would have to add $4,219 for that five-year warranty and the 3,000 hour, two, three-year 2,000-hour maintenance package, which ends up equalling, I hope I had that on your page too, 177, 066.57. With Case's government pricing or their municipality pricing, that exact same unit with the warranty and everything included is 165, 886, 18. That is in stock and available for delivery upon your all's approval. Do you want to, we can accept both of these here if you want, here in just a second. Or you can go ahead and group them all together, whatever you need to do. Okay, I'm good with that if you are. On the Case... The new Case 856 motor grader. The Sourcewell price is 276, 540.16. And that warranty cost through Sourcewell would be an additional $7,071 for a total of $283,611.16. The Sourcewell, or the Case price is going to be 268, 586, 18. So that's a significant discount and savings. The things that definitely come along with that are very nice for safety. A lot of the equipment these days are coming a lot more with the rear cameras, which are really crucial and help eliminate some of those blind spots. I haven't had any motor graders back over any cars that I'm aware of since I've been superintendent, but I do know there was at least one before I was superintendent that got a little busted.
People too.
Yeah, people are even more important than vehicles. Vehicles we can definitely replace. People are very difficult. You know, there's, there's multiple that get hit each and every day, I know, many of the construction sites. Want the other two as well?
Well, you have the loader backhoe, is he in this group or this...
The backhoe's not in this group yet. I was going to take care of all the ARP things and I'm still waiting on that one to make sure it's going to be available. But if you're ready for that one, they would love that, but it's going to be delivered until December. It was, because I was getting as many quotes as I could on things.
So who gets this, who gets the warranty stuff? I mean, Sourcewell getting a kick out of me?
No, well, see, that was going to, I don't know how that, my understanding through the Sourcewell, that must have been the price that they have to pay or that they would have to go back to the dealer.
I mean, all the additional amounts for warranty and stuff.
Yes. And I think when Sourcewell puts those out, I think they do that specifically just for the piece of equipment and the warranty's not included in that. So I think what Case has to do is take the Sourcewell price and just add the warranty, because that's well under anything that you have to bid, since it's under 50,000, is my guess. I can ask for better clarification.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just wondering, I mean, who, I mean, one, the price is higher and then you're going to pay the additional one.
And I think that's something that Case can incentivize theirs for municipalities to include that in there.
Thank you.
I just know it was covered and that was what I like when something breaks down, especially with all the emission controls that are on, stuff and the DEF systems that can very quickly eat up about 15,000 in repairs. Then there was a couple of used items that I found also to upgrade our semi, our tractor trailer that I think is, I can't remember if it's a 1994 or 1997. It was, it's in need of some repairs, so rehoming it will make it a pretty good idea. Yes, this new one is a 2014.
Oh, okay. Oh, the one we're replacing is?
The new used one, yes. The one we're replacing was about 20 years older than this one's. It is a 2014. It's got quite a few miles on it, but our semi tractor doesn't actually run as much as whatever a lot of our other equipment is. So that's why we can get by with the used one on that one. I was able to locate this Peterbilt with the pack car motor that's been very well serviced and taken care of. Looked pretty good at a ticket price of 52,000. And it already had the wet kit, so it would operate our lowboy, which is the primary thing that we use that for, to go retrieve equipment when it's inoperable or pick up equipment if we get something purchased or take it somewhere to have it worked on. And then the last one, you guys know the battle that we've had with our mowing tractors. And we have a lot of brush that we control around the county with 535 miles of road miles. You double that for each side of the road, so that's a lot to cover. This is a New Holland TS6-110. It's got a boom mower that'll reach about 22 feet. And it's got a Tiger Bingle 22-foot boom mower attached to it and it was at 86,500. I was trying to get a couple of comparables for that one. I was in communications with another dealer. He had one almost identical, had the exact same hours on it, was right at 1,300 hours. I even went so far as to ask him, I said, "Where is this one sitting?" Because I think we're talking about the same tractor. But his was a, had come from a municipality in Tennessee. This one came from a municipality in Missouri. And he was going to be right at 100,000 for that. He didn't give me the paperwork, but that was the verbal that he gave me. I told him, "Go ahead and get me a Sourcewell pricing for a new John Deere with the new boom mower" that I didn't get, but you know, it's going to be a lot more than that. Usually I can Google search those and find 10 or 15 of those sitting around. Craig Miles only had one sitting on their lot. And there's two people that was right behind me coming to look at that tractor. So I said, "Just give me enough time to secure that for you and I'll be right back with you." Said, "I think it's a done deal. I'll tell you sure after this meeting." And I know that it, that does surpass the 500,000, but there was some other equipment money that we already had approved in our budget to be able to offset that additional cost. So everybody's on the same page. Timing could not have been better for that. I greatly appreciate that. It'd be nice to put this stuff to use. Supply chain is pretty, pretty weak. In fact, the wheel loader I really wanted was the next size up. They had two of them that came in, they were gone in two weeks. Yeah, this is a wheel loader, that's a 5.1G and this was a 856. Going to see how much an old one sits. If I rent, if I try to rent a road grader, if I can find them, they're about $7,000 a month. The John Deere that we updated with would probably have the most hours on it. It would be the most likely one to be rehomed. I was going to run for about 60 days to see how often we used it or how much it sat and then move it. The semi will definitely be moved immediately. Two of the mower tractors will be put online immediately, going on gut deals. I say immediately, it might be a month to get those things up. And I'm going to try to list as many of those things as I can at one time. So if there is a wholesale buyer that wants to pick up multiple tractors, a road grader, a semi, or whatever that they can... that he can kind of schedule his haul and according on, sometimes that brings those additional bidders. And I've already got a solid number locked in by our supplier here. I'm not asking you buy it, but I said I'm asking you set the ground for us, and then all of our sales are always pending our approval, so all I gotta do is to eye that one. The legwork's been done, it wasn't something that was put together haphazard in the beginning, so a lot of these conversations started back before I.
You okay? You okay? Yeah. I mean, we accept the, I guess, the bids or the, make a motion that you're allowed to purchase. The Case 521G wheel loader for 165,886.18, the Case 856C motor grader at 268, 586, 18. The used Peterbilt 365 semi tractor for 52,000, and we use New Holland T 56-110 for 86,500 with the Tiger Bingle 22 boom mower, Tiger Bingle.
Any more discussion of questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. As long as I was sitting here, the warmer the seat was getting.
Appreciate all your legwork.
I'll follow up with you about the sinkhole we talked about earlier. We're gonna be filling that up just a little bit tomorrow and monitoring to see what it And these other documents here we'll sign after the meeting, that was all for our bridge inspection, and we've approved all that. I just need autographs to send that to NDOTs. That's all I have unless you guys have something for me.
I'm good. All right, that's good so far, I think I've talked the longest, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Don't see a whole lot of public here, so Heather, anything from your side?
I am working on the capital asset plan, and I actually went to a Southwest District Auditor's meeting and met with a vendor there, and I would be very interested in having him come here to look that over. Basically, he said, as long as all of our roads, which, this is kind of a question for you, are roads and all infrastructure on NDOT's website? Okay, so he would be able to go on there, collect all that information, he would contact the insurance company and collect all that information, and he recommends that we were to actually go down to a, and we kind of talked about a tier plan on that. He said, it's really not our responsibility, like, the auditor's responsibility to hold inventory necessary as much as it is to have a plan, and he said, $10,000 and just have $10,000 flat, he said it's more manageable, and then his system is, it's basically a built spreadsheet that every year, anything new we purchase, I would just require everyone to turn everything into us, and we could depreciate it out on his system. So it was really, I think it would really help the county, and it will get us up to speed for our next audit.
Do these plans have anything about kind of what gets your place next? I mean, or is it strictly a, kind of like an asset document?
No, so it's not, this, it's just an asset document, and he's going to build our history, basically, with all of our buildings and everything, but then we could grow from there on that. And I was asking him, like, what a ballpark figure is, and it seems extremely reasonable for what work is going to go into this.
I think that's a good starting place, and then we can look at things, you know, kind of plan out, okay, you know, six years, we're going to replace computers again.
Right.
So kind of have that laid out in, in planning some of these things, you know?
Absolutely.
Furniture, it might go last for a good while, so.
Right, and then what, his main thing is, the state basically wants to see all of our land, all of our road, all of our infrastructure, and I just, you know, that is not something that any of us in the office really know about to go collect that information.
So he's just suggesting anything, $10,000 and more?
Uh, yeah, so anything over $10,000 would have to, whenever we purchase that, would accompany a form, basically, so that we could have all the new purchases in our possession to go ahead and continue building that data.
It's not the minimization depreciation.
Yes, which we should have always been doing, but they are now requiring it, and it's going to be a write-up item on next year's budget. Yes, I have to have it in gateway when I do the annual financial report this next time.
And I guess it makes sense coming from the state board of accounts that they would want something like that, they really wouldn't care, kind of the things that we talked about early on about, you know, I mean, you use the fixture rating to decide what road is going to get.
Yeah, and all that's turned in on our annual report.
Right, and I kind of thought that, you know, we'd be looking at something similar, but different.
Right, and he said, you know, you need to think more along the lines of separating the two, of an inventory and a manage those separately.
Yeah, okay. I think this helps us kind of plan expenses in the future. So you said more than 10,000?
Can't be allowed to say.
You can give me a ballpark.
Uh, less than 10,000.
Okay, so a piece of ballpark.
Yeah, less than 10,000, so I thought that would be a...
I mean, putting it all together, I mean, as long as it's a good one, it's, it takes some effort.
Right, so the meeting I actually sat through, Orange County had just, they did this last year, and they went through their first audit of everything with his plan, and he said, no problems, so everything went good.
Sometimes that's all the state wants.
Right.
If you're going to have something like that, whether you use it or not, not really their concern, but I think, I think it'd be good if we used it.
Absolutely.
To...
Did Eric, anything on your side? Okay. Anybody else? Did Kate Bob?
Comments on the website? I like it, you can pull up that front, first picture, you got a cow staring in the mirror. Hello! Good change. Look, we have the...
Creek.
Yeah, we had that, but, yeah. Bales.
That's good. Yeah. Bob, anything? You have anything? Dave, anything else?
So, water's coming, stormwater, it's not much of it. So the Health and Human Relations Commission has been talking, trying to talk to folks to see who are interested in, I figured she, I'll talk to her and get her information, Mr. Heather, so that, I mean, we're trying to focus on making Jefferson County a better place, so looking at neighborhoods that might need some help in cleaning up, fixing up, that just don't have the resources, the physical bodies to go do stuff like that. So, I think the health side, I don't know if they, I don't know if they approached us about it, they thought we would really look at it, but I think there are plenty of things in the county where people need to know, what, what kind of resources do I have, health-wise? You know, I mean, one of the, the people that brought it, brought it up to me, their son is adopted, and so for dental work, it has to be through Medicare, and there's nobody in the county, no dentists that will take Medicare because the system is really terrible. Not their fault, but they just, you know, and they tried, a couple of them have tried, I, well, I take it back, there may be one, but, you know, trying to help people understand, where do I go, what do I do? You know, most websites, government websites, they are, they spend a number of times on them, and you look, and you look, and you're like, all right, I'm done. So, so that's, that's kind of moving forward. Hopefully, September, or, you know, I kind of just having things, kind of some groundwork laid, and then kind of starting next year, get things set up. You know, and they, funny, you know, grants, it's one of the questions, do we have funding? Or how do we get funding? Or what do we do? Maybe it's, it's worthwhile, you know, getting a 501(c)(3) designation, so a group like that can, can apply for grants. You know, if we can do it at the government agency, or look into that. Anyway, so that was interesting to hear. So I have reached out to, so I got a contact with someone at JPG who put me in touch with Todd Bass, who is in, I think he works with the airspace, so we're gonna, he's at Andrews Air Force Base, or I think they probably do that, so he's going to Arkansas next week, so I'm gonna talk to him Saturday just to see, see what his thoughts are. It's impossible to say, but, so, hopefully we get some information. Council meeting, I think has Ray Ray go next, do you think?
I do not have that on my agenda as of right now, but...
I mean, he was on it last time, couldn't make it.
But wasn't able to make it. I'll reach out to Ray and see if, I think he's the one that told me.
So, I'll, I'll jump to Adam, see if he has a good contact. Just don't know. Since Steve's not here, who usually tells us there, maybe it's Friday at 10 at Clark County Government Center or whatever it's in Jeff. 10 o'clock, I'll make sure they call there. Be at Camden, if you'd like, I'm supposed to pick up our grandson at 11, so I think I can work, work that out. Let, let Grandma go pick them up a little more, go to the meeting, she'll pick me up a little bit. Come on, that's all.
That all? Okay. Well, next, next meeting will be at Jefferson County Public Safety Center, 620 Green Road. We got it, we're getting it. Treatment train meeting will be at four before that, and then five will be the commissioner meeting. Hope to see you all there. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and I entertain a...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you.